It is seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. Karen, can you please take a roll call?
Commissioner Young. Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Chair Langness.
Present. We do have a quorum. For those that are guests tonight for some point in the meeting on the agenda, we're going to just ask that you keep yourself on mute until that point and then we'll bring you on live. I do see Susan Young has just joined as well, 7:01. Karen, we're, we do have a quorum, so we don't, we're done with roll calls, so we're at the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask that those that are able to join us in our nation's pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Next is approving the agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion? Commissioner Miller?
A motion that we approve the agenda.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Batty?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the agenda? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on approval of the agenda?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen? Still absent. Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. We are on item number five, approving the planning commission meeting minutes of October 28th, 2020. Commissioners, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Brink moves. Is there a second? Commissioner Miller?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the item? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote on approval of the planning commission meeting minutes of October 28th?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. We are on item number six, Forest Lake Mini Storage Site Plan Review. This is a planning commission final approval. We will have Donovan present the staff report and then we'll offer an opportunity for the applicant. Or I'm sorry, we'll have Donovan present the staff report and then we'll allow commissioners questions on that. And then we'll allow the applicant to add anything that they wish to have. Commissioners can ask questions and then we'll bring it back to the planning commission to have consideration of a motion and approval. Donovan, do you want to get us kicked off?
Certainly. Chair members of the planning commission like to present the site plan review for the Forest Lake Self-Storage Site Plan Expansion. And this is located 407 15th Street Southwest. We have members of the project team on the meeting with us, including Gary Weckworth, Andrea Hamel, Walt Wallack, who is the applicant, Ryan Wessels. And what the project location is over in our industrial area over by the by the freeway on 15th Street. Forest Lake Mini Storage has been there for maybe decades. I'd be curious if we have some institutional knowledge, how long it's been there. And in 2017, they did do an 8,800 square foot expansion here, Sean, if you can see my cursor. And what's the subject for tonight is to fill in this open space with four additional building pads. The the site plan that's been submitted has shows these. First off, that site showing the existing containers, storage buildings, and the pavement. Currently, there is some row of shrubs, trees along 15th there. We find some wetlands to the south. Essentially, what you saw, you saw in aerial, it's grass. What is proposed are these four building pads. The more toward the front of the site, they meet the, that front 40-foot setback. There is a 20-foot wetland setback that's, that they're also complying with. Those existing wetlands for which the wetland delineation approval is in process. And the, what they're proposing is to build two, the structures A and D immediately, and then follow with B and C later. A and D contain 54 units. And as we learned earlier this summer, there are the U standards for self-storage units. And you know, based on what they've submitted, the site plan does comply with those. Because what they're proposing, and I'll show you in a minute, is, is a full landscaping on this 15th Street side to block any view of the doors, which is one of the U standard requirements. The the parking. You know, there is adequate parking for this. U standards do require the extra one space, but we found that, you know, with current, the way that self-storage units are currently used, there's ample parking for the users. Of course, there's the requirement of having, you know, one access point. And that's found here, just a little bit, just directly west of the proposed building site. There are maximum pervia standards which this site will comply with. 80% for this D3 limited business and limited industrial business district. The, there are, there's a stormwater filtration basin that's proposed on the south here. That's currently being reviewed by the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District. Actually, at their board meeting tomorrow night, the project is seeking that approval. And I'll show here the, those the plantings that are proposed for these. And this needs to be, you know, bleed all along the fence to comply with the codes. And I'd like to, I'm here from the project team, if, you know, this, there's still full trees kept here. Is this actually, am I looking at an older one? Maybe the crew can correct me.
This is, this is, that's a little bit older one.
Okay, I apologize for that. I'm pulling off the, the planning commission packet. Let me jump over to the, thanks for that correction. Let me, let me jump over to the most recent. One, let me stop screening here for a second. And so there's, you know, the seed engineer has reviewed it and there's been some back and forth as far as complying with and just meeting concerns regarding, you know, the stormwater drainage from the site into the filtration or emergency overflow, et cetera. And though the, the staff memo seen in the, in the packet does indicate a number of concerns, subsequent reviews, I'm sorry, submittals have taken care of all those except the things we'll mention around the final watershed permitting, what formal wetland delineation review. And you know, so I, you know, I really ought to commend the project team for pulling together all these these, you know, meeting, you know, staff concerns. Because there, we've the project team is eager to get a, go on the project. They have submitted a building permit application. So I am pulling up the C4 and the and I thought I saw, I guess what I was looking for is I thought I saw further south, further. Landscaping plan showing complete coverage of that. So am I, am I still on the wrong plan, project team?
There is.
Oh, that's the 12th. I'm sorry.
Yeah. If we want to just save on time, we have this entire row of trees. We've continued that solid along there as one of the comments that we received back from the city. So we have infilled that, so you can't see the building A or building B.
Thank you. And the, the structure, there are minimum design standards for these structures and these structures will be, as far as I can tell, almost identical to the, the structure that was built on site in 2017. There are minimal, you know, vertical and design elements, but I think they meet really what the use is. And these, these codes are meant to be more for structures that have, you know, higher public use. And just basically that when there's the full screen that we have on the site, that, you know, the, the level of design that they provided is adequate. No additional exterior lighting or signage is proposed. Chief Newman did review the site plan and he found that there's, you know, adequate fire hydrant across the street to actually meet the, you meet his concerns for emergency response. And I will also now, thank you, Brian, for sending that plan. I do want to just, to share with you the plan that I initially thought I was going to see. That shows the that landscaping all along that, that 15th Street frontage. And so that, again, meets the landscape plan requirements. And so with, with that, it's, it is a staff recommendation with seven conditions that relate to mean the landscaping material plan. Subsequent conversations with the project team said that they, you know, that they, they will make sure that the planners, the landscaping material does survive. And given the long-term project time with two immediate construction, two immediate building constructions and two later, the, you know, the fact that those get, that there will be time to ensure that they, you know, with a letter credit held, that they, that those, those planes will survive. And with that, I'm happy to take in questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners, is there any questions on the staff report? And one, one note, also, it appears that Commissioner Keen did join us at 7:12 PM. Commissioner Young, go ahead. Commissioner Young, you're on mute, though.
There, okay. On the, the drawings that were submitted, what are the containers that are shown around the existing buildings? Are those roll-off containers? Are they? What are those, please?
They are your basic storage containers. They've been there for years, as far as I can tell. And, you know, they are allowed in this zoning district. So they're, they're, they're part of the site.
So they're like pods?
Well, that would be the more, you know, contemporary name for them, but I think they're, perhaps the project team can tell me better, better, because I
This is Brian.
I can't say.
They, they are, they are like ocean-going shipping containers. So like a pod.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on the staff report? Seeing none. Thank you, Donovan. And I apologize that I don't have your last names, but Gary, Brian, or Andrea are one of you presenting or any additional information you want to tell the commission tonight?
Hi, I'm Andrea. I'm the architect on the project. Donovan summarized the project. It's fairly simple in nature. We've worked back and forth with his team to make sure we met all of their concerns. I'm sort of, the tree landscaping was the last item that we pulled together after seeing what was there for existing trees were not ideal trees. There were sort of junky buckthorn-type material for the project. And I don't have anything else to offer.
All right. Thank you, Andrea. Brian or Gary, did you have anything additional?
No. No.
I believe I heard two noes. So commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we can move in towards consideration and/or a motion. Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the project with the most recent drawings, including the full coverage of landscaping. Subject to the recommendations of staff and the city engineer and the watershed district.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I'm not seeing any, but I will comment. I think, I think Commissioner Young's motion with the landscaping in addition is is a good notation to add. And it looks like a good project, so I'll definitely be supporting it. Any other comments? Seeing none. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Langness?
Aye. Motion carries. I wish, I wish the project team and good luck and welcome to the expansion of your business in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
And you are welcome to stay. We'll just ask that you tune yourself on mute if you're interested in the rest of our business of the evening. We're moving on to item number seven, Hidden Creek Taylor Farm Concept Subdivision Review. This is a final with the planning commission tonight. We will have a staff report by Donovan. Commissioners can then ask questions. We'll then open it up for the applicant or applicants to present anything additional they have and have commissioners ask questions there as well. And then we can get into more robust conversation amongst commissioners and feedback at that point. Donovan, do you want to get us kicked off here?
Certainly. I'd like to present the concept subdivision review of the Hidden Creek Taylor Farm parcel. Mr. Paul Brueggerman is applicant here. He's a developer who's worked in the city for a number of years. I know that Summerfields was, was his project at one time there. Like to present the first location. Just to let, you know, this is in the Headwaters PUD with just west of Fenway and north of Headwaters Parkway. So there is a 60-acre parcel here that's also just west of the large city-owned pond and actually it's floodplain as well. And this is a subject property for this site plan. The, what's been submitted is a 120-unit subdivision that's, that occupies about the 40 acres of high ground on this parcel. And recently, a wetland delineation was approved. So there'll be some refinement of the lines, but as you can see, there's wetlands both to the west and the east. This is an MXR1 zoning district with that planning, Headwaters Planning and Development. What we see here is a connection to the stub end of Enfield Avenue on the north in the connection to a future extension of Headwaters Parkway on the south. This, Headwaters Parkway, Headwaters PUD does allow, you know, the, these type of single-family lots down to 65 feet or so. It's this concept stage in which we're providing just simple feedback to the developer, non-binding feedback. You know, this is still somewhat at the, you know, higher level, and so we haven't gotten into, you know, that minutia of all the lot sizes. But generally, they do seem to represent, in general, what what has, we've seen in Headwaters before with some of the larger single families, some of the villa, you know, type, which would be more like the single level, though it's early to talk about which, you know, what type of building types these houses would be, but they're all single-family dwellings proposed. What you'll see here in the middle is a park dedication area. It's about 4.9 acres. And what's been proposed are trail connections, trail easements to the surrounding roads in the north-south, southeast kind of, and and north. And this is something that, you know, staff feels strongly that there'd be some, you know, park dedication as land within this area to serve this future neighborhood. And, you know, this, there was a review of, from the the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission last night and in which they reviewed a, the application. And part of the discussion was some staff recommended trails that we saw more directly on the north leading to that Enfield sidewalk. Also leading more directly to south with a connection, more direct connection down to this Headwaters Parkway. And a rationale for this is that there would be to do more of a kind of a connect, connection between existing trails on Headwaters Parkway leading up to sidewalk and then a trail that leads up to 202nd Street and then along that trail. Then leading back to Fenway. And of course, there's trail on Fenway as well, running north and south. So that was reviewed and the, I think the plant commission, I'm sorry, the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission provided really good feedback. They, I wouldn't say there was, there was not a consensus at all that this was what, what they liked as the park configuration. But, you know, so I, and it's going to be reviewed again at the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission in early, at least in mid-December. Because part of this process is, is to get a formal recommendation from that commission to counsel on the park dedication. And, but tonight, you know, it's kind of more within the, in the, within the plant commission realm to discuss the lot size. As I note in the in the staff memo, this does, you know, fall within the, you know, permitted density. It's about, what I calculate, about 3.2 dwellings per acre. I didn't get the exact acreage on uplands, so there's, there's some wiggle room there, but it falls within the comp plan range for the MX, for this low-medium density land use area. And city utilities are adjacent, both in north and south for that public water and sewer. And the I'd like to, and, you know, basically tonight, you know, provide the informal feedback to the developer. And also you know, kind of give some feedback now that they can, they can use, you know, as they, you know, to prepare a preliminary plat. I will just, you know, in brief, mention some of the comments that staff had that, which, you know, relate to the trail easement should be at least 20 feet in width. And the I am unfortunately having a headset issue, so I'm going to have to kind of go back to my microphone on my computer or else you will, you will lose me. But also, there is staff desire to see some ghost plating to the south. So that the the, we know where those two, two roads, the stub end road to the south, where they go and that we'll not, you know, by this, by that connection, you can see there are those two running south that there's not, it's not providing some other future development that would, or making some issues. And I apologize. So anyways, how about with that, I'll turn over the plant commission for any questions while I change my microphone here. Sorry about that.
Commissioners, are there questions on the staff report before we open it up for the developer? Not seeing any questions, Donovan. Donovan, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, did you give us, I mean, is, in a development like this, is there an average lot size requirement? There must be some kind of minimum
Yeah, yeah.
Lot size, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yes.
Can you hear me?
Sorry, I
We can hear you fine.
You can hear me fine? Well, no, I put my headset back on.
We can hear you fine with the headset, but you got pretty quiet.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's telling me I need to recharge it and come on. So yeah, there's a 7,500 square foot lot size minimum, Dennis. And the, if you look, I didn't do the full review, but it looks to me virtually all the lots do comply with that minimum lots area.
Well, there's a few, there's a few up along the very north edge there that are slightly under that. They're about 7170. And I'm not here to picket that. I, it looks to me like it'd be very easy to adjust this so that that, you know, this overall layout here, so that that I mean, it wouldn't take much at all.
Yeah, no. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry you wrote you, but I know I need to correct myself. No, I was looking at the wrong line. It's, it is a 7,000 square foot, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there, some of those are near there, but they, they, they do comply.
Other questions on the staff report? All right. Donovan, if you're trying to figure out how to change your microphone, go down to the lower left corner where the mute button is. Hit the arrow next to it and then at the very top, it says, "Select a microphone" and you can change it that way. We'll open it up to the the developer or the applicant, landowner. Is there, who do we have on that is presenting?
Hi, I'm Paul Brueggerman. I'm here. Thank you guys for being here tonight and appreciate your time and your input on this project. We're excited to do it. Just if I could just back up, last night at the Parks Commission's meeting, there was a pretty, I thought, a pretty strong direction that they would like to have more of an inclusive park rather than just land without the equipment developed in the park and the full park developed to the, to the full extent with playground equipment, trails, you know, whatever amenities that everybody agrees. you know, whatever amenities that everybody agrees on. And I think we're gonna almost have to re-lay out this whole area. Basically, the same concept and lots and sizes. But I think, Donovan, correct me, I think it's, they're looking more for a direction of a central little neighborhood park that we have, we're developing a total of 120 acres in this area, this piece, the, the 40 just south, and then the 40 just to the east of it. And if you go back to the plan, right where the Headwater Parkway Road makes a curve to the south, right in that curve, the suggestion or the recommendation I made to the planning commission is maybe put in approximately a five acre park with the amenities included in it as part of that development, similar to Summerfields where the park is a, you know, the central, in a central location that everybody can see and admire and drive by rather than having the park hidden behind all of the homes. And Donovan, I, again, correct me, but I thought the planning commission expressed some pretty good interest in that type of a layout.
All right, Mr. Bruggerman, I suspect you mean the, the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission last night?
Parks Commission, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, um, I don't, you know, I think, Paul, the conversation definitely, they were, they were curious about that. But I think they also, I mean, they wanted to see park area as shown in the concept plan.
Donovan, you're breaking up.
Yeah, Donovan, you're kind of going in and out. The closer your mouth is pointed towards the computer, it seems to be better that way. It's when you're turning your head, it's just cutting off completely.
If I can get my headset recharged. So the, you know, I think there's a lot of questions and, you know, and Jamie, the Parks Coordinator, did basically collect theories of, you know, discussion points. And I would say that if you were planning all these areas and had controlled property, that'd be viable option, but you know, that is.
Donovan, we've lost your mic.
Trail Lanis, while he's working on that, I do have a couple of questions for the developer, which would allow Mr. Hart to work on his mic.
Yeah, let's, let's change gears. Go ahead, Commissioner Young.
Thank you very much for this. I think it's going to be a good addition to Forest Lake. I do have some concerns, especially since the the layouts that we have do not have your wetland delineations. I am concerned that some of your lots on the east and on the west that back up to the wetlands are going to be coming to us for variances because of the depth of the lots. So as, as you find this down and better reflect where exactly the wetlands are in relation to, to your proposal. I'm hoping that you'll make sure that there is plenty of space so that we are not looking at variances for somebody, for instance, to put a, a deck out the back that would be too close to the wetland area. What is your proposed phasing on this? I, I, I really want to make sure that we are not having for any significant period of time, only one way into this development and one way out. I see that you are eventually going to go up to Enfield and, and, and get into there, and then you have your, your entrance off of Headwaters. But I'm really concerned, especially with the two stub outs on the southwest area that we might end up with, with too much dead end activity. So if you could let us, let me know, please, what your thoughts are on phasing this project and your access to the project.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our plan is, we actually have with a national builder to take, do a two takedowns, half of the lots as soon as they're ready, hopefully this summer, and then the other half the following summer. And then continuing on and moving to the south and developing the, the southern 40, and then again to the east, really eastern 40. So I guess we're gonna try to move as fast as they can move, but their plan and their projections are to be able to do around 50 homes a year. And that's what their takedown schedule is with us.
So where are you planning on selling lots first and which one are you putting in first?
We haven't determined that at this point, but I would assume we're gonna come off of Headwaters Parkway and go north approximately halfway through the site.
And then during that first phase, you will link up to Enfield and make that a through so that you have more than one way in and out of your development.
Probably not in the first, well, are you calling this, are you calling this the first phase? Then the answer is yes, but we're gonna probably divide this into two build phases, if you will. This would, does that help answer that question?
What I want to make sure of is that when you start selling lots, you have enough roads put in here so that you have your entrance off of Headwaters and that you are also have linked up to Enfield on the north so that there's more than one way in and out of this development.
Yeah, I don't know that we've made that decision. Is there a reason for that? I mean, if we, if we had to put a temporary cul-de-sac in, I don't think it would exceed any length of run, you know, roads if we did that.
What we've seen in a couple of other developments in Forest Lake, as time goes on, it's, it's really difficult to predict the future. And those stubs tend to last for a significant period of time and access in and out can become a problem. If, for instance, something were to block off the area at, for instance, if there are emergency vehicles were to, were to block off the road over toward Headwaters, then there's no other access out of that subdivision if you do not have the connection up to Enfield. So that's, that, that's just a concern that I have for public safety. When you come back with a, a better delineation, right now, you, you have drafted your access to the central park on the lot lines of different, of the, of the various properties, between 82 and 83, 89 and 90, 71 and 70. And I want to make sure that as you do further design, that those accesses to that park space are very clearly delineated, that it is not just a park for the people that are backing up to it. Our park plan says that this is a regional facility with access for all residents of Forest Lake. And sometimes when those are just sort of a lot line that is an understood access, that, that doesn't happen. And so I just want to make sure that as you're doing further work and, and, and further developing this, this concept, that those are very clearly delineated so that we don't have the folks at, for instance, 70 and 71 saying, no, 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 you can't come through here. That's our, that's our side yard and, and, and you're not allowed to come through. When it is, our, our park plan does say that that will be a regional facility. And then I agree with Donovan that I really would like to see some sort of, whether, whether you call it ghost plating or whatever, so that we know what those roads are going to link to on the south. Again, I, I am concerned about making sure that, that we have plenty of flow through the development for folks to get in and out. And we don't have an entire 120 homes having only one or one and a half accesses in and out of the development. And that would be, those would be my comments, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Young. First of all, I believe the regional park is 80 or 120 acres south of this location. The parks did not identify this, as far as I know, as a regional park location. It was more of a neighborhood park. They, the, the plan, and we took that, this came up last night, and I think it's at least 80 acres south of this. Donovan, was it 90th? That the regional park was set up and that this was more of a quasi neighborhood park? But we will certainly take a look at that. Again, my feeling as the developer, I would just as soon have the park right on Headwaters Parkway so that it's an amenity that it is seen and accessible to everybody rather than doing just what you're, you know, putting it behind all of the homes and it's not as inviting and opening, open to everybody else. So I guess I'll have to confer with Donovan and verify that, but my understanding is the regional park is yet quite a bit south. And then, once, once this is developed, there will be the access through there. But, you know, it, it's, it's almost impossible not to have some dead ends in, in the phasing that may need some temporary cul-de-sacs until the next phase, you know, comes.
I understand that, but I think that, that having 120 homes with one entrance that in and out is, is, is not good for public safety. And I, I do have to say that I think that your Summerfield Park, that area is very, very successful. And what I'd like to, to avoid, for those of the rest of the planning commission who remember some of the parks that we have, we have one east of 61 that's, that's between
The mini storage.
Facility and the houses that I would say 99.98% of Forest Lake doesn't realize is a park. Mr. Batty, you may remember that one specifically.
So Commissioner Young, I hear what your, your concerns are on, on both of those fronts, and we will try to address that.
Thank you.
Right now, we just don't know our phasing. And quite honestly, this plan, based on what I heard at the, from the Parks Commission last night, is not what they want to see. So I guess most, you know, these are planned to be single family homes on roughly 65 foot by 125 to 130-ish lots. And that's what we plan on going down to the south as well. But yeah, we'll certainly take a look at those items.
Are there other, or Donovan, did you get your mic working? Did you have additional comments to add that you were trying to say earlier?
Yeah, I, you know, I would, I mean, I think it's, it's still, it's still a work in progress with the park and the Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission's recommendation. And, but I, you know, I will affirm, you know, that the, you know, what you see tonight for that, that, and the concept plan for the park was not received favorably by the, by Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission. And so we'll, we'll, they'll be revisiting that.
All right, thank you. Are there comments from other commissioners? Or, or Mr. Bruggerman, did you finish with your presentation? I don't know if we had cut you off earlier or not.
I, you know, I was just responding to whatever questions that you have.
So it sounds good. Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, how, where are we at with Headwaters here, the extension of Headwaters? Is that, is that gonna be part of this overall development here? Is the extent, I don't think Headwaters goes quite this far yet, does it?
No, no, it, it, and, you know, this plan will include a, a little bit of, you know, extension of Headwaters to that, that southern entrance. But shown on the, you know, the second page of the submittal of the plan shows that, that, that the curving road, which, you know, is shown in the, the original master plan for the, for the PUD. So this, you know, it's not really determined exactly how far they'd build out, I mean, build out with this. Generally, we have, you know, build out to the, kind of the end of the platted area. Pretty similar, but right now, Headwaters Parkway pretty much ends at Falk Avenue, right by the lift station there. So that extends, you know, it's a several hundred feet, but, you know, built to that, that collector road standard, you know, for that, you know, continuing that ultimate build out to, to the west.
And then I was trying to make sure I understood, Commissioner Young, here, you were, what your, your idea is that you, you want the connection both to Headwaters and to that, is it Enfield or, or? Whatever that whatever that road is to the north there, you want that as part of the first phase of development, right? Going that far with the road?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, especially when there's, there's a lot of construction vehicles. We all know how the one in and one out, roads get blocked, things happen, emergency vehicles come in.
But you weren't looking more than that. You weren't looking for more than those two, were you?
No, I just need more than one in and the same out.
Other comments from commissioners? I, I have a couple. I'm gonna share my screen because I think it'll be easier to explain. Did I share this properly? Can someone give me a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay. So my comments are the, and this was on, on the staff report. So if, if the park is placed here, and I did not watch the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission meeting last night. So I'm, I'm not sure what their comments are, but I know we have a sidewalk on the west side of Enfield here, and it would be very important, I think, to have that aligned here, whereas the easement is here, and I know staff made comments in that. And then the staff comments are that there needs to be a 20 foot width here on these, on these trail easements that come in. And I think that's important on the ones that are near a proposed park, if, assuming a park is placed here so that staff can get equipment in and out and maintenance and, and those pieces. But the trail that comes here and then it goes down this side and then here and then connects to Headwaters, I think for continuity of this park being part of our system of parks versus just this neighborhood park, having a, a trail behind these homes, and I don't know that it would need a 20 foot easement because staff would have access up here, but the, the minimal necessary to have a trail that goes behind the homes and connects to Headwaters with a sign, I think will be more inviting for the wider community using Headwaters Parkway than they would driving up and parking in front of somebody's random house and then using a trail easement. So if, if we're unable to have dedicated parking or this park immediately adjacent to a road somewhere here where it's obvious that the, the public doesn't have to park in front of someone's house, I would like to see greater connectivity to the Headwaters system. So that's my comment on the, the park. As far as the, the road here, I, I think Commissioner Young makes a good point. And if you go to Enfield all the way to Headwaters, I don't know that you'd even need a cul-de-sac here. You could literally stop the road here and this could just be a turn temporarily, and then phase two could be all over here. The other comment is, I would like to see the phasing so that phase two doesn't eliminate significant access to whatever park is in here. So if, if phase one started off at Headwaters and it only went up to, to here and you put a cul-de-sac in, there would be no theoretical access to the park, which I think if we're placing a park in there, I'd very much want to see that in phase one versus in phase two. And, and I'll, I'll say specifically about Headwaters, not, not this developer, but we, we saw in Headwaters where, where things started and, and then they don't get finished as initially planned. And, and so if we're gonna have a parkland dedication, I very much want to see that on the first phase. The The, um, the, a positive comment I have on the overall piece is I'm very glad to see that it does not have cul-de-sacs. I know that for Public Works, that is an expensive management and has all sorts of other issues with snow loading and, and those pieces. So I'm, I'm really pleased and I hope that whatever changes are made between now and, and when the final product comes forward to the city, that, that we don't have cul-de-sacs and, and personally, I, I'd like to avoid them if possible. Are there other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Keen?
The, the two roads on the west side that are heading south, is it, is this developer also developing that underneath there on the south side of that? So right now, those roads just stop at where it says future development, they just end there. Is this developer also developing south of there down to Headwaters?
Yeah, Commissioner Keen, this is Paul Bergman. Yes, our plan is to go southward on that next forty. That would be our, I guess it would be called our third and fourth phase. If this is our first and second phase.
I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, if, if this is the same contractor, you do have some plan where those two roads are going to go. If it was a different contractor, who knows where those roads would end up? So you, you do have a plan then for that. Okay.
Yeah, and as Donovan mentioned, Commissioner Young asked and the park asked and Donovan asked for us to do some ghost plating on that parcel. And we'll prepare that when we get, when we come back to the Parks Commission, I believe it's December thirteenth.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions from commissioners? Mr. Bergman, is there anything specifically from us that you would like to have feedback on that we did not provide tonight?
I guess basically the, the lot sizes, like I said, I think this plan is going to change somewhat. And I, and I guess as the developer, again, I know I'm repeating myself, but I like the park to be more of a central location of our neighborhoods rather than tucked behind the homes. So my, my plan and what I would like to come back with is if, if we could bring, can we bring that site plan back up, Donovan?
Certainly.
And one of the commissioners, or one of the issues that came out last night in the Parks Commission is this area is four point nine acres. It's almost five acres, which is more than the ten percent net of what this development is. So what came up was the Parks Commission was short on funding. They weren't able to maintain all the parks that they had. They certainly didn't want to take on another park that was just land that wasn't developed. And they'd rather have a park that was completed as part of this neighborhood. So if you could just raise that up a little bit, if, if you look at where the radius is of, all the commissioners are, are blocking it, but the radius there, maybe keep going down, yeah. So if you look at the radius there of Headwaters Parkway, right where the arrow is, my proposal would be to put a park area in there that was complete, including the trails, the landscaping, the playground equipments, the park, the whatever, like, you know, that whatever would be agreed upon between, you know, the city and us to put in there. And I think, again, unless I totally misunderstood the, the Parks Commission last night, they were certainly open to me coming back with the plan representing that and not having this little, in my word, a pocket park that is really, you know, benefit for all of the homes that back up to it, but it's really closed off to the rest of the, the community. Where if you have the park on the main artery, it's, it's a great visual, it's, it's open area, it's, it's inviting and welcoming and aesthetically appealing to everybody.
How, Mr. Bergman, if I might, might ask, how close to, so it's hard for us to comment as a commission on, on a concept plan, and I understand where you're going with the two southern parcels. The east and west, they're labeled future residential there, but it's hard for us to comment on a theoretical parking connection there that's not visualized in any of our materials. So my question is, is how close to having those concepts drawn up are you?
Well, we, this just all, I mean, we have some, you know, real sketchy sketches and we need to clean them up and we will be working on that. So that's something that we can prepare. I, it, it, it's, it's, you know, it's going to be more of the same, right, of the lots laid out as they are and, and they're going to, you know, fit the contours and work with the wetlands that we have. But again, our thought was to maybe, you know, five acres is, in my mind, is a big open area to not have as a regional park. And, and to put the playground equipment in there, I think it would be an amenity for all of Forest Lake plus this neighborhood.
And, and I, I'll call you in a second, Commissioner Young. And I agree with that. And I, I personally would be more accepting of a, a smaller park immediately adjacent to Headwaters where it has that greater value and visibility to the community than I would the, the more condensed piece in the neighborhood, if that would help. Another piece that I just wanted to comment on in, in your comments was in, in regards to the, the housing and, and the plots and, and that piece. Oftentimes, I think in these concept plan reviews, we oftentimes give our feedback that's critical and I, I try to, try to add the positives too. And, and that is actually one positive. So I think the single-family housing you're proposing here is very fitting of that area in that region in our future. Commissioner Young?
And, and Mr. Bergman, you just, you, you did ask about the lot sizes and, and when I began, I, I do want to make sure since we don't yet know, y'all do, but, but we don't yet know where those wetlands are going to be actually there. I just don't want those lots to be, the depth of them to be set up so that we're going to be receiving a, a significant number of variance requests as folks want to extend the deck or, or, or a back patio or something that would encroach on the, on the wetlands. So I think that when you do your, your next design that, that doesn't have the, the, the park in the middle of the area, you'll be able to, to work on that a little bit.
All right, Commissioner Young, I hear that loud and clear and we certainly will address that, writing a note on it or already have a note on it that we'll, we'll double check that and verify that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bergman, was there any other specific things that you were looking for from our, our commission tonight in, in comments?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, I appreciate the feedback. I'd like to, you know, have us take another run at this. Like I said, we, you know, we just met with the Parks Commission last night. And I think we, not that we're starting over, but I think we need to back up a little bit and look at the, the whole project and come back with a, a plan that's a little bit more conclusive of what we're proposing, even though we can't, you know, we don't know exactly what's going to happen with the next phases because we don't have the delineations done. We don't have all that in place, but it would be, at least give you guys something to look at that gives you a concept that could possibly happen, a bigger overall picture.
And, and that, that is how we look at these is, is concepts. So oftentimes, I think we, we just throw everything at you. So I, I hope you don't take that as uninviting. I, I think most of the commission here, if not all of us, if I'm reading them right, are, are pretty happy about this type of development going in there. So I look forward to those, those next steps and the, the later reviews that we'll have. Donovan, was there anything additional you were seeking from us on this?
No, I think, I think you provided that, that informal feedback. I mean, I think it's been a robust discussion and, you know, provide some good guidance to Mr. Bergman and, you know, we, we are meeting with the project team later this week, actually tomorrow, for a pre- and middle meeting and this will be good, good input for that meeting as well.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Bergman. I look forward to, to, to your next plans coming forward to the, the city. And you're certainly welcome to stay on the rest of the meeting. Normally, a, a concept review, there, there isn't emotion formally from us, it's, it's just feedback that we provide, so.
Yep, no, and I appreciate it. I mean, the, the more things that you tell us you don't like, I, that's, it's, I don't take it personal. I've been doing this a long time. I, it's, it's good critical or good information so we can critique what we are doing, so.
And hopefully it saves you a little money too, because it can be more expensive down the road to change things if we don't like something, right?
Absolutely. And we want to, you know, a, a good neighborhood as well as you do, so, again, thanks for your time.
Thank, thank you. Commissioners, we will move on to item number eight. This is Castlewood Golf Course Clubhouse Site Plan Review. It is a, a final decision by Planning Commission. We will have Donovan present the staff report. We can ask questions on the staff report. And in this instance, the applicant is the city. I did see the city administrator pop on. I assume that he's going to present anything additional from that perspective and then we can move on to discussion and consideration. Donovan, did you want to get us kicked off here?
Certainly.
Chair, one, one more note. I, I apologize, Donovan. I just wanted this in the record. Sorry, I'm scrolling through my agenda on my other computer here real quick. And I did tell Donovan about this just prior to the meeting, but just for, for the record, if we're looking at the agenda on page thirty-four, the, the staff memo does say Saint Peter's Church Rectory, CUP and PUD Amendment Application, but obviously all of the, the reports and the agenda item on this are in no relation to Saint Peter's Church and that was a copy over from a template used on our last meeting. So just wanted to note that in the record that, that was just a typo. Go ahead, Donovan, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, members of the Plan Commission, I'd like to present the Site Plan Review for the Castlewood Golf Course. Just to make sure that, just to keep it, again, in the record, the location of Castlewood is on Highway ninety-seven, just south of, of, uh, Second Lake there. And this was, you know, has townhouses on it and I believe the townhouse developer dedicated this land as a public golf course. So it is public recreation in the single-family zoning district, which is a, a permitted use. The Site Plan Review that we have before us is, is simple. These, and this is somewhat similar to what we'll see with the Saint Peter's Project. We'll see it on December eighth for review, I Commission. What we have is a structure approximately thirty, eight hundred square feet in size. You know, two, uh, two representations of it. One has a sidewalk leading up to it on this, this former, you know, plat map showing the, the clubhouse lot. This is from some of the original development material. And then we have a, a plan that shows the water and sewer connections to the clubhouse footprint. And this is, this was a submittal for the Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, Wireshed District Sediment Erosion Control Permit that the city received for the project. The clubhouse itself is meant to replace basically a shed that's been the pro shop or the, to serve the, the, to serve the golf course for a number of years. And, you know, this, the use of this will, is, represents the principal use for this public recreation. And there will be some refreshments served, some, the, the pro shop, meaning the, you know, things to, you know, support the golf use. And, you know, golf-related equipment and accessories. And the, because of the simplicity of the project, we don't have sediment erosion control permits. We do have that simple, you know, utility connection. The, there, there was not a landscaping plan provided. And with this, you know, the staff recommendation is to have landscaping on the, the, the rear and sides of the building that don't have any, any windows in order to kind of screen that, the building in that, in that regard. And also within the single-family zoning district for this type of use, the commercial, the commercial design standards don't apply. And so, you know, this type of structure, though it's nothing elaborate, you know, the, the design standards don't apply for it. The, essentially, yeah, this is a great improvement over what is there. Also, it'll have the ability to be an area where the, the golf carts can be stored and, you know, provide a, a good amenity for the Castlewood golfers. With that, happy to get any questions from the Plan Commission.
So commissioners' questions, and I can certainly get kicked off here too, on the staff report. The, the purpose of the Planning Commission, so that I understand this, because I know that this went through at least, and I don't know that it went through approval, but it at least went through a review at Parks Board. The city council has approved different pieces of this. So the Planning Commission's review here isn't to say whether or not the city should have spent ten percent of the Federal Cares Act to fight the coronavirus on a golf course clubhouse, or it's not to say that the city should have robbed the sewer fund to pay for a clubhouse. It's really focused on building and, and what else, Donovan? What, what are we to review tonight?
The, in this case, to ensure there's no negative impacts on, you know, environmental resources nearby, nearby wetlands, no impacts on, on, you know, neighboring properties. And then to, does it represent, you know, a, a decent aesthetic? And that's where I believe that the landscaping added to it will basically provide, kind of soften the, the, the more or less just basic structure it's proposed.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, are there questions on the staff report? Commissioner Keen?
Donovan, did, did you say there's not going to be any windows in it?
No, no, let me, let me, I think I was speaking and I actually wasn't sharing my.
Hey, that's fine. You're going to put windows in it, that's fine. I was just thinking a clubhouse without windows.
There's windows, there's windows on two sides and not, not on the sides that face the golf course because we don't want golf balls to go through the windows.
Okay. Where do, where do, where do they presently store the golf carts in the wintertime?
Uh, they're rented leased, so we don't keep them over the winter.
So they pick them up, haul them back, next spring they bring them back out, okay?
Correct. Currently, currently during the golf season, they're stored on the restaurant's property. And we'd like to separate our operations from the restaurants so we have a clean lines of who's doing what and what's the authorities and things like that.
I, I wasn't sure if they stored them in that back room where they keep all the lawnmowers and all that stuff, so.
No, no, we, they, they pick them up at the end of the season and take them back.
Okay. Is there, why don't they just build it over the current location of their clubhouse now?
Because that is, because, believe it or not, that small clubhouse, which is probably smaller than probably where anybody's sitting right now, is on the restaurant property. It's not on the golf course property. And it's a very small shack that, part of the And, uh, it's a very small shack that, um, part of the. The need for a new building is so we can. Even though we've got vaccines coming, is to social distance and separate people because you can't. We have in that little shack, an, an, an office. We have the pro shop, we have refreshments, and it's all, if you ever walked in there, you get more than two people in there and it's tight, so. The thought is that we can have a bigger building to spread people out, also to have a better amenities, but. And also have bathrooms. Right now golfers go to the porta potties and that's, nobody really likes that either, so.
Well, yeah, well, my question was, why didn't they just build it? On that same location, but you answered that with, that's on the restaurant property, so. That's probably, I, I've been out there a hundred times or more, and, yeah, that's a good location. I was just curious. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, I saw your hand go up after him.
Just, I guess, one que, a couple of questions. Looking at the footprint, it looks like it's about a thirty-eight, thirty-nine hundred square foot building you're looking at putting up. Is that about right? Correct. And, and I guess my question is, since it's a public golf course and we have a lot of people that go out there and use it. The building's not real attractive. I understand you're going to use part of it for housing, golf carts and what have you, but. Wouldn't it make more sense to build a little bit nicer building with a little bit more curb appeal, so to speak, and, and maybe we could actually have some. Maybe the public could use it sometimes for small events or small gatherings or small meetings versus putting up a. Pole building in the middle of this beautiful golf course.
I would be happy if the council wants to give me the funds to do that. I mean, we've gotten enough. Gotten enough heat on just building the building, so.
Well, I'd be in favor of a really nice building with a really nice. Place to eat in there and a place that the public could use and we could get some revenue for the city, uh, you know, for small events, uh, but, uh, okay.
I wa, I wouldn't disagree with you.
Commissioner Young?
We would not accept this proposal from any builder or developer. That would come to the city. I am disgusted and appalled. I can't believe. Oh darn it all. The city should be demonstrating to folks what we expect. When a proposal comes to us. I tried to scale this off of my screen, and quite frankly, when I tried to scale it off the screen, I couldn't come up with the square footage. We don't know whether or not the lines that you've already installed are going to drain properly for your sewer. I don't know where the runoff from the roof is going to go. Yes, it is. It's butt ugly. All right, it just. It just is, and the location where you're putting it is really highly visible in this community. But what really bothers me is. What we have in front of us is nowhere near what we requested, even of a storage facility. Much. Commissioner Miller, I'm watching you. It's hard for me to keep a straight face. I. I expect better of my city, quite frankly. I expect my city to show folks what we are expecting of them, not to be. This is, this is a completely inadequate proposal. It, it doesn't tell us where things are going to drain. I don't know how this, this is going to be situated on the property. Is, is your little loafing shed? Because it is a pole building, and that's a loafing shed out the front, like any horse person would have. Is that loafing shed going to be pointed toward ninety-seven? Is it pointed toward the parking lot? Is it pointed toward the back end? In terms of those windows, um. My stalls have better windows, um, just in terms of aesthetics. Ditto with the doors. I know that Donovan has asked, um, that there be some minimal landscaping. This is a golf course where we sort of expect people to. And, and, and this golf course is known for having good landscaping and, and the rock theme. That has been carried out throughout the golf course, and I'm not even a freaking golfer. I, I, this is, this is not what I expect of my city. There's one thing of, of saying we're trying to save some money. There's another of saying. This is what we want the planning commission to evaluate for our job. Of evaluating an amenity for the city or a development in the city. Or even a storage facility in our city. This is, this is completely inadequate. I'm very, very disappointed. Mister Administrator, in, in, in what we're seeing tonight. Did I just blow out all the speakers? Because I can't hear anybody saying anything.
Eric, I can't hear him. I'm sorry, I, I, I called on Commissioner Batty.
Okay.
I had mute on, on, I, I use a mute on my hand thing, so you don't even see it on the screen. My apologies.
Well, um. I'm not going to cover what. Commissioner Young did here, but I, I'm. I was just looking at this from the standpoint of how this, how the site is going to work and. Uh, it looks like all of the parking is on the. On the restaurant site. I'm assuming there's obviously some kind of a, uh, some sort of shared agreement with that, but I, I mean. There isn't even a, a line on this drawing here showing what, uh, you know, how, how, how you're going to get to it. You know, where, where there's going to be paving and, or if there is any paving or. I, I mean. Is there any plan for, for that sort of thing? I, I just, um. I mean, I would ditto, uh. Commissioner Young's. Comments about the, the, the building itself. I, and, yeah, I just. I just think we can do better than this. I, I, I really do. I mean, with very, very little effort, I think we can do better than this. And I. I'm not going to get into the setting the precedent, but if we, if we approve this tonight. On, with these documents, this is going to come back to bite us over and over and over again in the future. Mark my word.
I, I, I very much agree with, uh. The comments from Commissioner Young and those added from Commissioner Batty. And, and, and I do have a question on, on something here, so. In, i- in the number of years I've been on this planning commission, we. Tend to get a lot of reports and information when proposals come forward to us. Um, we tend to see them before they go to council, um, whereas this whole process seems just. Completely backwards, um, and, and that frustrates me, um, quite a bit that. I mean, council's already approved doing things. I drove by it today. And it looks like the sewer line is in and you got grass planted on top of that. It looks like they're halfway through building the walking trail that would go over to it, and it looks like. The, the pad is ready to, to be poured, or maybe it was already, or it was just graded. I was looking from a distance on ninety-seven. And so I'm not, I'm not even sure why you're coming to us or why you didn't come to us. Prior to starting all of this process. Um, and one of the questions that I have is every time we have a commercial development. Or any sort of facility like the, the public schools that we've had, we have a fire report. Um, I don't see anywhere where we've had our fire chief look at this. And quite frankly, I would be surprised if he would pass it, because normally he wants access relatively close to the building. For safety purposes. And even if he forgave that and said, okay, we can run a hose all the way down this walking trail, has the city then obtained? Additional rights on that right away that they have or they may have, or whatever it is. With the parking lot that is owned by Stella's that golfers use to have fire access, because exactly where a fire truck would park. In front of that trail, that is where cars are parked every time I go in and enjoy food at Stella's. There's always cars blocking that, and that would be your, that would be your closest fired location. So, I, I mean Donovan, do we have anything from? Our fire chief? Has he even looked at this?
No, he hasn't looked at this. Um, my conversations with them, with these type of, you know, um, constructions is, first of all, is it, you know, is it. Happenable, you know, is there residents that have a little structure? And. You know, the same things you apply for as far as fire response. Um, I mean, I just pulled up the, the water lines and looked for the nearest hydrant. And it's on the other side of the water hazards, you know, in, in the, in, among the townhouses. So those same concerns you say actually. Are what would make Stella's, you know, a, a difficult place to, to fight a fire. And, and they do have pumper trucks. I mean, and they would, it would pull up. And, uh, and they, they, you know, there may be places in the city where there aren't fire hydrants. And so I don't think, uh, you know, the fire, I did not, you know, consult with Chief Newman. But, um, I don't think that would have produced a different result.
But, but I mean. So if we compare it to Stella's immediately adjacent next door. My, I, I think fire hydrants are important, and, and that's an addition, additional concern I wasn't thinking of, but I'm, I'm just talking about simple access. I mean, at least at Stella's, you. You could drive a fire truck right up to the south end of that entire complex. And I believe on the entire west end of that complex, and maybe even a little bit into the back by, where that, uh, that maintenance building is. You couldn't get a fire truck near this building from what I can read on. The relatively ill. Prepared drawings that we've been provided tonight in comparison to what we're accustomed to. Um, so my, my, I, I would be most concerned about access. I mean, there's plenty of properties in this city that. Don't have hydrants. I think the nearest one from my home is miles away. Um, I, I suspect, looking around at commissioners, that's true with a couple of our homes. I, I, I recognize it every spring when I pay my homeowner's insurance. So hydrants aren't the primary concern. The primary concern is access. Can a fire truck even get there? And yeah, I understand that they could put a pumper truck in there and run hoses, but all of that is. Time wasted in that type of emergency, and I, I don't know how I could even approve a plan. Seeing all of those concerns. And not even having a report from our fire chief. So that's, that's where I'm at today. I mean, that's, that's a simple thing, but I mean, Commissioner Young brought up important pieces with engineering. I, I, I had looked at it and I, I think the sewer would drain properly there, but I, a- after she mentioned it, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, a- and I, I would like those engineering reports before those things come forward, um, as well, so. Other. Comments from commissioners? Questions? Commissioner Keen?
Well, I agree with a lot of that, and, and, you know, all my years on the fire department until I retired was, uh. Yeah, just like you said, yeah, we could bring in pumper trucks and put out big tanks and stuff and, and. Pump water over there, but big waste of time. Is the building sprinklered? You know, is it sprinkled at all, or, you know, a lot of these things, the Commissioner Miller mentioned the, uh. I mean, this thing does look just like a pole barn, a really poor pole, pole barn. And I have seen a lot of pole barns in nice areas where. They do a lot of fake windows, fake doors, you know, and it looks real, because on the inside there's lights and it looks like windows and stuff. But this plan has, has, really has nothing, so. I couldn't go along with this, the way it's, the way it's set up right now.
You're on mute.
I, I, I think we're still actually on, on the staff report here, uh, but we've kind of moved into discussion, so at any point, somebody could make a motion as well. Commissioner Young? Commissioner Young, you are on mute.
I thought that Mr. Brink had a, had a comment, um. But. Mr. Batty is absolutely correct. If we approve this tonight. Anybody can come in to the city and said, hey. Y'all, y'all did this. That's all I need. To be approved for my business, my pole building, my storage facility, um. This is, this is not acceptable at all, and. We should, we really should be an example. Of what we are expecting of developers and, and builders in our city. And not say, well, you know, we're the city so we can slide under.
Um, Commiss, Commissioner Brink, um, apologies if you raised your hand. You're actually at the bottom of my screen tonight. I don't know why you ended up there, so if I didn't see your hand raised.
No, I'm just kidding. No, I just wanted to, to go on the record. I, I really echo what, uh, everything has been said tonight. That is very disappointing. And having, having golfed this, uh, golf course for, for over thirty years. To actually put a positive spin on this, um, I, I do like the location of it. Unfortunately, with the fire access and everything, it's, uh, it's so tough, but. If it was a nice looking building, it actually is a good spot visually. It sits high on that, that hill. That used to be the old number one, um, tee off, or it might be now. It's been a little while, but, um. It, it's really one of the only locations you can actually put something like that, but, um. The, the building is, it's just so awful. I don't know what to say about it, but, um. I, you know, like, uh, Commissioner Miller said, there are definitely ways to make that, to improve on it, but. That's all I wanted to say, and thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, I mean. What else can you say? We, we've covered most of the stuff, but, you know, you could put some really beautiful windows across that backside that are looking out at those fairways. Uh, you know, facing kind of the northwest, and you could get some great, I mean, it'd be a great place just to sit and, you know, have a, a sandwich or a, or a beverage or something. After your, after your round or before your round and just watch. I mean, you could do some really cool things with the building, but I, as a. As a contractor and as a, as a, as a homeowner, I would be embarrassed to build that building.
Commissioner Young, Commissioner Young?
Mr. Chair, I move that we tabled this item. This is not ready for prime time.
There, there's been a motion to table. Commissioner Young, could you clarify your motion to. State. The length of table or the point at which you want it brought back?
I wish to, uh, I move that we table this item until we have, um. An appropriate application from the city. That would meet the standards of any other review by the planning commission. Including, um, how this. Building is going to sit on the property, what the various elevations are going to look like in relation to the golf course and. Not the page out of the Menards catalog. I, I want to see where the runoff from the roof is going to go and make sure that it. That it is going to be appropriately handled. I do expect at least a minimum of landscaping. And we have a fairly active master gardener, um, association, or master gardener group in Forest Lake and two garden clubs. That I'm sure would be willing to assist. Um, I, I expect to have an engineer's report that will tell me that this site. Is appropriately drained and does, will meet, um, the city's standards for water and sewer. I expect this to have the same level and appropriateness. And information available for the consideration of the planning commission that we would expect of any other builder or developer in this city.
Thank you. I'll, I'll summarize that as Commissioner Young has moved to table to. A point in time when the city can present additional information to the commission. Is there a second on that motion?
Adequate information.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. A motion to table is non-debatable. Uh, Karen, can you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Commissioner Batty, you're on mute.
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Chair Lengness?
Aye, motion carries. The item is tabled. We are moving on to other business. There you are. Councilmember Gerard, I always call. Uh, there you are. Council member Gerard, I always calling you first. I just didn't see where you were on the screen.
I was, I was live and, and listening to you guys. So, uh, let me find my notes here. At the last council meeting, um, your Encore Apartments sign was approved. The zoning text amendment for medical uses and the Smith property, the ones over by Menards, um, that zoning text amendment and the comp plan, um, they were also approved. All of them unanimously by the city council. And I'd be happy to take any and all questions.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Gerard. Are there questions from commissioners to our liaison? Don't see any, Paul. Thank you for that update. Uh, Karen, do you have any updates for us?
I do not have any. Thank you. Anybody have questions on, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Karen? Don't see any. Donovan, do you have anything for other business tonight?
Just report, um, that we do have a planning commission meeting in December. On December ninth, um, we do have a agenda including, uh, I think yours, U D amendment and, uh, C P amendment. Um, and that is the only meeting scheduled for December. Um, that, Commissioner Young, you have a question?
Donovan, could you make sure that whatever the church submits is adequate for our review? Lessons learned. You, you, you said earlier that what we were receiving from the church would be very similar to what we're seeing tonight.
What, what you'll review, um, has much more detail than what we saw tonight.
Just making sure.
Mister Miller?
And Donovan, could you make sure you red tag the, uh, construction out on Castlewood Golf Course until they come back with more details?
They, I think they, they bear the evidence. So, you know.
All right. We, we did table that. So we probably shouldn't discuss Castlewood at this point unless someone is moving to pull it. Um, yep, uh, we'll move around commissioners, uh, Commissioner Keen, do you have any updates?
I've got nothing. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
No, I have nothing.
Commissioner Brink?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Batty?
Nothing, nothing for me.
Commissioner Young?
Nothing further.
And, um, we'll move on to me. I, I do have, um, one update. The, uh, we are moving into that season where, uh, appointments for each of our commissions and boards, um, start to expire in January. I know that my term on the planning commission is expiring at the end of January, I believe, and I don't ask who else it was, but I want to say there was two other commissioners that are on that list. So if you're on that list, um, you may want to reach out to the mayor and ask, uh, if you want, if you wish to be reappointed or at least have that conversation. I have informed, uh, Mayor Bain, and I know I did have a couple of conversations, but I wanted to be fully transparent and open to the public. That I do not intend to seek reappointment, uh, in January. Um, so my term will end at the end of January and the planning commission, I will make very, very clear. It has nothing to do with any of you or staff. I just need some time for me. So that, that is my update. Unless anyone else has other business, we can move on to adjournment.
You can go.
I, I'm, I, I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Keen. Um, I, I truly do, but, but I need some time for me. Um, and, and perhaps I'll be, perhaps in a year I, I will ask it again, um, if there's an opening at that time. But I want to be really just transparent and say that is my intent so that, um, those that wish to apply for our positions, um, they can, they can go right on the city website and do that and start those conversations. I am happy to talk to any member of the public that, that is considering it and can tell you the work that's involved in it and the, uh, the low pay that we get and those types of things.
Firstly, renumeration.
Um, and I, I also wanted to be just very transparent so that, uh, you know, not that I should assume that you would have appointed me chair, uh, you know, again next year, but I, I wanted you to at least put those thoughts in your head so that somebody didn't end up in the meeting, get it appointed to, uh, a, a leadership position on the planning commission that wasn't expected. Um, and I, I will note, I think that did happen the first time I was nominated as vice chair. I, I kind of looked over and said, how did that happen? So I just wanted it to, to be a little bit open and, um, and let you know that, that detail of other business. But I, I appreciate the kind words, Commissioner Keen. Is there any other business? Uh, Karen? Karen, you are on mute, by the way.
I was just going to comment, um, on, on the list. So we do, we will end up having, um, four spaces to fill. We still have Michael Black's, um, space to fill. And then it looks like Commissioner Keen and Commissioner Brink, your terms are up in January as well. So I just wanted to let you guys know.
All right. Thank, thank you, Karen. Is there any other business? We can move on to adjournment if anyone wishes to make that.
Karen, I did send you a, Karen, I did send you a note, but you answered it. Thank you.
Okay.
Was, was there any other business? All right. Commissioner Young, I saw your hand go up.
Move adjournment, please.
There's a, there's a motion from Commissioner Young and a second by Commissioner Brink for adjournment. That is an undebatable motion. Karen, can you please take a roll call vote for us?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
And Chair Lagnes?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all. We're done at eight thirty seven PM.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a nice holiday, everybody.
Yes. Happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, everyone.
We can get a light show, Chair.
Yes. Swing, swing by my house if you want to see a light show. We're turning on twenty five thousand lights, uh, the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And you can social distance and listen to it from your car over your FM radio. But, um, as soon as Karen shuts off the live tube, I, I can show anyone on here a three D rendition of us.